For Thursday, October 15th, 2020. The time is now 6:02 PM. Item number one, actually not before I say that, I should say, due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting www.temp.gov/clerk for more information. Item number one is moment of silence. Let's just take a minute here and have a moment of silence. Item number two is the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to go ahead and lead here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the republic which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number three is meeting minutes. Tonight I'm going to be assisted by Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Just stand by one second. I would like to make the approval of City Council Meeting Minutes A1.
Great. It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Vice Mayor Keating. I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garlin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The meeting minutes pass seven to nothing. Next up, we have item 3B. I'm going to move, look to Councilmember Navarro again. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to look for approval for acceptance of board and commission and committee meeting minutes B1 through 10.
Actually, Councilmember Navarro, is it B1 through 11?
Ah, there it is. Yes, B1 through 11.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote as well. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Board meeting, actually acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes are accepted, seven to zero. Next up here, item number 4A, Mayor's Reports and Announcements. So I just wanted to note that there are going to be appointments to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission this evening. It's outlined in item 5A1 on the agenda. Also, one of the recommended appointees, Michael Lewis, has actually moved out of state. But I just wanted to let everyone know, for those of you that are not aware, the city of Tempe has a mayor's youth advisory committee that does incredible work to give youth a voice in local government. The commission was established in 1980 and is comprised of 100% from a variety of schools in the city of Tempe. In Section 5A1, the council will be voting to approve members appointed to this commission. Typically, prior to the virtual world that we'd be living in, we would invite these appointees to the council chambers to be able to shake hands and congratulate them. However, tonight, I'll be introducing the new appointees through a brief slideshow. So I'll go ahead and turn to Jason for the slideshow. First up, we've got Siri Patti Patti. Next up, Denzel Higiro. Next up, Melody Valdez. Next up, Devon Thurston. Katie Lynn. And Ruben Paul Merritt. I just wanted to thank everyone, actually Tyler Johnson as well. So I wanted to thank everyone for giving up your time to have representation on a variety of youth perspectives and interests throughout the city of Tempe. And we look forward to seeing all the work that you're going to do and everything you're going to accomplish. So wanted to thank you in advance for your service to the city of Tempe. Next up here, we have Lights On After School. So we know that Kids' Own has been a staple at our Tempe schools for more than 29 years, providing morning and afternoon care to children in K through 5th grade. As many Tempe parents know, it is an amazing program that offers our kids homework help and free enrichment classes, as well as a little fun after school. While this year has proven to be difficult to provide this service, the city of Tempe still continues to provide this service to our residents. We know how much this program is valued amongst our Tempe families and in our Tempe community. We're really lucky to have such an amazing and award-winning program. In order to promote the importance of after-school programs such as Kids' Own, we will be keeping, recognizing, keeping the Lights On After School Day with a proclamation. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation here. Whereas, the citizens of Tempe stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills, and support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends, and build stronger communities by involving parents, students, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, and engaging families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas programs such as Tempe's Kids' Own enrichment program have provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. And whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 24th, 2019, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And actually, I'm going to go back and just say, that should probably read October 24th, 2020. But we'll correct that for the proclamation that we actually give them. Whereas, more than 28 million children in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 19.4 million children have no place to go after school, while so many after-school programs across the country are facing funding shortfalls so severe that they are being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. And whereas, the city of Tempe is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Now therefore, I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare October 22nd, 2020 as Lights On After School Day in Tempe, Arizona. All right. Next up here, we've got item 4B, City Manager's Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm honored tonight to be able to utilize my time here during the regular council meeting for the purpose of the swearing-in of our interim chief of police here in Tempe, Jeffrey Glover. As I think we all know, policing in America, not to mention the city of Tempe, is certainly in the spotlight for a lot of reasons. And it's a time when leadership in that area is sorely needed. And I'm very appreciative that Jeff has agreed to come back to the city of Tempe after retiring earlier this year and lead the Tempe Police Department on an interim basis for the next year. Jeff is a person of the highest caliber, someone who I think we all have a great deal of confidence in, including this community. And I couldn't be more excited that he has agreed to come back at this critical juncture to lead the Tempe Police Department. At this time, our Tempe City Clerk, Carla Reese, will administer the oath of office to Jeff Glover. Thank you.
Good evening, Chief Glover. Are you ready to go?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'll have you raise your right hand and read your oath that's been provided to you in advance into the record.
I, Jeffrey D. Glover, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, and the Charter, Codes, and Ordinance of the city of Tempe, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of chief of police in and for the city of Tempe according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Chief, and welcome back to TPD. We look forward to working with you in your new capacity.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I just have a couple of quick words that I want to share, and I just really want to thank all of you. And I want to start off first by thanking God for this opportunity, for without Him it wouldn't be possible. And I just want to also, as I start this next chapter in life here, I got to thank my best friend, my wife, for allowing me to start this second journey and coming back to Tempe, in a place where I've grown up in the organization, in a city that I do love. And I want to thank the mayor, council, city manager, for having the trust in me to be the interim police chief. And you know, I reflect back on a moment that I once shared with retired Commander Brenda Van Amberd as a new officer, where she asked me, you know, where do you want to do with your career in this department? And I replied to her, well, might as well strive to be the first African-American police chief here. And Brenda, if you're watching, I've accomplished that goal. I want to also thank you, thank the many friends and the mentors who have put up with me over the years of constantly asking questions and advice, and I will be asking for more advice in the near future. But I love Tempe. I love this community, and I look forward to serving you all as chief of police. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That's all I have for this segment of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And just before we move on to the next item, I just wanted to very quickly say congratulations, Chief Glover. Very excited about working with you. Had the opportunity to get to know you when I first got elected to the city council back in 2008, and have always been so impressed by your level of professionalism and integrity, and how much you care about the men and women at the Tempe Police Department. And so just really excited to have you back in this capacity as our interim chief. And I know that, I believe I speak for all of our council in saying that we all are really supportive and look forward to working with you over the next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members of council want to say anything before I move to the next item?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Glover. I'm excited to work for the city, and not only in the city, but our reform efforts as well, as I know you're a part of. And we didn't know each other very long during my first term, but everyone has nothing but great things to say about you, and I'm sure you'll help us take the city in an exciting new direction. But thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I would just also like to say, thank you, Chief, for stepping up. I know that in these times, leadership is important as stated, and I believe that you and your abilities to help us guide us through this is going to be very strategic. I look forward to working with you. We do have a journey ahead of us, and I would like to say thank you once again for being in this position, and we will basically be tackling some real issues. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, member. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember QB?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Chief Glover. I'm so, so excited to have your leadership, and I particularly want to say, just being a member of the mayor's task force and public, I appreciate your open heart, your open mind, and the approach that you're bringing to the task force. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Councilmember QB? Councilmember Garland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, welcome to the new chief. I've heard a lot about you, and I am really looking forward to working with you and being a part of the process as you move forward. So I can't wait to work for you, work with you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you very much. Welcome back, Chief. I've known you for 20 years and worked with you for many of those years, and I'm looking forward to a number of years ahead, working with you and getting things done. So welcome back.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams? And Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Arredondo, thank you, Mayor. Hey, Chief, just want to say, I've heard a lot about you. Oh, actually, I've had the opportunity to work with you, and so I guess I know a lot of those things are true. And I will say, I know how well-respected you are within the PD, within the city of Tempe, and within this community. And we are really fortunate that you have come back and decided to be a leader within the Tempe Police Department. I think you're going to be a phenomenal fit. I know how much you care about the city of Tempe, how much you care about this Tempe family, and how much you care about those officers that proudly wear the uniform. And I know you're going to be exactly what we need moving forward, and I really looking forward to working with you again. So welcome back, and I look forward to working together in the future. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Chief, once again, congratulations. It's an honor to work with you, and just really excited about your returning to the city of Tempe, and congratulations once again. Mr. City Manager, are you good on your end?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no other items.
Great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
That's not true.
That's not true?
Under, the election update is under the city manager's updates as well.
The clerk is correct. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any other items, but during my time, Carla is going to provide election update. My apology.
Wonderful. The city manager will yield his time to the city clerk.
Thank you, city manager, and thank you, Mayor. I have two short segments to present information for our voters. The first is a video short that was shot with Councilmember Adams. The second will be a presentation that was done in partnership with Councilmember QB for the Tempe Women's Club last week. So Alex is going to roll the video first.
Hi, I'm Councilmember Jennifer Adams. Today, I'm sitting here with Carla Reese, who is Arizona's Clerk of the Year. So we're very proud of Carla for that achievement, and today we're going to talk about voting. So Carla, how can people vote in this election?
So, October 5th is the voter registration deadline. We interrupt this broadcast for an important update from the Tempe City Clerk. As many of you know, the original voter registration deadline was October 5th because Arizona statutes require that voter registration be completed 29 days in advance of an election, so that updates to voter rolls, electronic poll books, and early ballot requests can be met by election officials. That statute was recently challenged, and while the Circuit Court felt that COVID-19 had impacted the ability for voters to register and provided an extension to voter registration deadline, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals held differently, and the extension is now expiring as of today, October 15. Those who have not already done so need to register by midnight tonight and go to ServiceArizona.com in order to vote in the November 3 election. Again, the voter registration deadline is tonight, October 15th, at 11:59 PM. Go to ServiceArizona.com and register tonight. Now, back to our regular broadcast. So make sure you register at ServiceArizona.com. If you want to check your voter registration or you're not sure of your status, go to BeBallotReady.Vote. That will take you directly to the Maricopa County Recorder's Office, their Elections Department site, and you'll be able to check your registration. You want to make sure that your address is current. If it's not, the site provides an option for you to correct your address. You can also sign up for an early ballot. You can sign up for the permanent early voting list as well, or you can vote at any early vote center, and we have information for you on that as well.
It's my understanding that we actually have a drive-through ballot area that people could just drive through and drop their ballots off. Can you describe that?
Correct. Tempe is fortunate to have Tempe Diablo Stadium. It's being set up as a drive-through, contactless ballot drops location. So for those of you who might be concerned about walking into an early vote center, those will have drop boxes as well, but this is a complete drive-through. You just drive, drop your ballot. It's in a secured ballot box. It will be monitored by elections-trained professionals who will make sure that no one tamper with or burns up the ballot box, any of those types of fears that people may have, or for those who feel that the mail service might not be their best option. However, if you mail your ballot by October 27th, the Maricopa County Recorder's Office also has a ballot tracking feature, so you can see what is received by the postal service and what's been received by election officials, just to verify that your ballot is where it needs to go. But again, you'll need to mail that ballot back by October 27th.
And then also, Tempe has some different locations that you can vote in around the city. Escalante was one of them.
Yes. So we will have nine vote centers in Tempe, and if you want to find those locations, you go to Locations.Maricopa.Vote. Again, that's the Maricopa County Recorder's site, and you can see any of those nine locations. There are also, there's also a location in Guadalupe, several in Phoenix, Mesa, Chandler that surround us, as well as Scottsdale. So if you live in Tempe but work elsewhere, they are hosting vote centers this year rather than precinct locations. So you can drop your ballot or pick up a ballot at any vote center in Maricopa County if you're registered to vote in Maricopa County. So Election 2024 Tempe, we have five bond measures, general bond measures on the ballot. We're asking that people watch for this in your mail. It has all the information on each of the ballot questions. There are five questions on your Tempe ballot. So please vote however you wish to vote. Make sure you read through the pamphlet and identify areas where you may support or oppose a measure.
Very good. Is there anything else, Carla, that you want to add to inform the voters about what's happening this year?
If you go to Tempe.gov/clerk, we have an elections page on the left-hand menu that will give you additional information on our vote measures. They also provide information through the Maricopa County Recorder's Office, and they're also the best source to reach if you did not receive your early ballot. Please call them. Phone number is 602-506-1511.
So I want to thank Carla Reese for sharing her time with us and informing us about the important election coming up. And I also want you to go to JenniferAdams.Tempe, and that's my Facebook page, and share it with your friends and family. So thanks, and have a great day.
So Part 2 will be coming up momentarily. Wanted to go a little bit further on the publicity pamphlet. Publicity pamphlets have been mailed out to all registered voter households. However, someone who registered late may not receive one. We have an electronic copy available at Tempe.gov/clerk, again, on our elections page. You will note on Page 4 of the publicity pamphlet, we have additional information on the CIP projects. They would have funding sources from general obligation bonds, and that can be found at Tempe.gov/budget, capital improvement program for FY 2021 through FY 2425. In the state of Arizona, early voting via mail ballots is available, and no justification is required. If you're not already on the early ballot mailing list and want to avoid possible exposure at any vote centers or long lines, you can still request your early ballot at Request.Maricopa.Vote. The last date of request in early ballot is October 23rd. However, voters can go to a vote center from now through 7:00 PM on election day to vote in person. Right now, there are only about seven centers open county-wide, however Scottsdale, just a couple miles north of us, has one of those centers. You can go to Locations.Maricopa.Vote to check location dates and hours of operation. The sites in Tempe should begin opening next week. My slide's hanging up here a little bit, doesn't want to advance. Here we go. So again, that voter registration deadline is tonight. Voter rolls will close. You go there, you use a voter registration, and you'll see right here, you just need a little bit of information to get in. One of those may be your driver's license number, last four digits of your social security ID. Any of those will take you through the voter registration process. That's just their way of validating the voter's information and your identification. You can also go to BeBallotReady.Vote to check your voter registration. Make sure that your address is correct, and you check the status of your early ballot. If you've returned your ballot, you can also check the status and make sure that's been received by elections officials. The portal looks something like this. You'll have fill the ballot there to where they have at you as you log in. Turn to the voter page. This is mine. You can see your party affiliation if you have one. You have your name, you have your address. Again, you can go into the voting locations. You can see the elections calendar. You can also look at your ballot to see what offices may be listed on that ballot. There are Mythbusters, all kinds of information available on this page. BeBallotReady.Vote. Voting is already underway. Again, bring your ID. If you go to the early voting center in person, you will need to bring your identification. Early ballots can be returned by mail until October 27th, or in person at any early voting location or drop box, again, listed at Locations.Maricopa.Vote. This page shows us right now, I ran the address of City Hall. Our closest early voting location is Scottsdale Plaza Shopping Center currently. Next week, there'll be some Tempe centers as well. It's only 2.9 miles away from downtown Tempe. It also gives wait time estimates. It'll show you how many people are in line. There is physical distancing and other measures being implemented at these centers for CDC, following CDC recommendations. You'll also see the hours. Some of these places close at 5:00 on election night. You want to be very careful that you get there by 7:00, but not all centers might be open till 7:00. So double-check those hours as well. So why do we want to vote? Your vote is your voice, and your voice matters. We're celebrating 100 years of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. I want everyone to get out and vote. The Maricopa County Elections Department also has ADA voter assistance. If you are in need of an accommodation, you can contact Maricopa County Elections, area code 602-506-1511. And again, vote by mail security, vote by mail's been an option in Arizona for more than two decades. They do have established security protocols. Voter identity signatures are verified, so remember to sign the affidavit envelope on your early ballot. Provide a phone number that they can contact in case your signature doesn't match your record. Or if voting in person, bring your ID. Ballots are tracked. You can also follow that tracking mechanism. Ballots issued to individual voters are monitored. If a voter inadvertently receives two ballots, you can't vote twice, that's a felony. But if by some chance you accidentally do, only the first ballot received is counted, the system will automatically reject a second ballot from the same voter and will trigger an inquiry. We don't want to do that. Your candidate selections on the ballot are not made public, though you're signing an envelope. The ballot itself, once your signature's verified, is separated from that envelope and goes to different personnel that will actually unfold the ballot and begin the tabulation process. So avoiding misinformation, we want to be skeptical of headlines, social media postings, investigate the source. Some stories are intentionally false and meant to discourage, intimidate, or mislead voters. Check with your elections officials and official sites for dates, times, and locations for voting. If you have any concerns or questions, contact Maricopa County Elections. Same phone numbers provided earlier. You want credible sources for voter information, check with the Arizona Secretary of State, Clean Elections, Maricopa County Recorder, and for local election questions, you can contact the Tempe City Clerk's Office. So that's our update for today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Carla Reese, our Arizona State Clerk of the Year, our award winner, and Alec Chin for your help in doing such a great job with informing our voters with this video. So thanks so much for your help. Great work, and everyone, get out and vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams? Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Carla, you really just dedicated yourself so much to ensuring that people vote, and we have a recorder who's done such a phenomenal job. I just want to point out, if you go to Recorder.Maricopa.gov/Subscriptions, you can sign up to get notification of where your ballot is in the process. And I know I got my dog started barking. I chased down the mail truck with my dogs, with the help of my dogs. I like to exaggerate. I got my ballot, ripped it open, and I immediately went to the post office in college, and this is all like within 15 minutes of last Thursday, I believe. And then in 24 hours, I received notification that my ballot had been verified, signature verified, and would be counted on October 22nd. So I really urge people to go to Recorder... So I really urge people to go to recorder.mericopa.gov/subscriptions, because a number of residents reached out and said, why don't we have an early drop-off location, you know, it's not happening until the 22nd of October. But if you put it in the mail, you really, you can keep track of your ballot, and that's an important thing. And if you really want to wait and deliver it, not to the post office, you can always do that, starting on the 22nd, which is just a week away. Thank you so much, Carla, for being so innovative and hardworking and trying to ensure that people vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Councilmember QB just noted, you can also go to beballeratedotvote, and that same link for tracking your ballots available on that portal as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate it. All right. And I would remind everyone as well to make sure you vote. I've already voted myself and used the exact system that Councilmember QB talked about, where I was able to mail my ballot on a Saturday, and I believe by Tuesday, they sent me a notice saying that it had already been received. And by Wednesday, it had already been counted. So I feel a lot more secure now knowing that my ballot is actually in the hands of county elections, and it's already been counted, and I feel comfortable moving forward. So I would agree with her, it's an outstanding system, and I would encourage everyone to sign up to utilize it if you can. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item five, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any item for separate consideration or declare a conflict of interest. If a councilmember would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the councilmember with the disclosure form. The public may submit written comments via the City of Tempe Speaker Comment Card at tempe.gov/clerk. The consent agenda is listed as miscellaneous items 5A-1 through 5A-12, awards of bids and contracts, items 5B-1 through 5B-14, and resolutions, items 5C-1 through 5C-23. Any item, as I said before, marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by a member of the council or a member of the public for separate consideration. Council, are there any agenda items that you would like to be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, did any member of the public have any comment cards or request to have any items removed?
Nothing for the consent agenda, Mayor.
All right, wonderful. Then I'm going to look for a motion to approve the entire consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Garland, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Aye.
Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The consent agenda's passed seven to zero. All right, next up here, we are going to move way ahead of the agenda. And I know, Madam Clerk, we've got some cards coming up for a couple of items, but I know those are a little bit later, so I guess I will wait till we get to those. Next up here is the non-consent agenda item, number six. All items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the councilmembers with the disclosure form at this time. Next up, we have item 6A, miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. First item under the section is 6A1, which is to approve one-year contract renewals with 26 firms that will provide repair and maintenance services related to the upkeep of city facilities. Terms recommended for approval for renewal include Hernandez Companies Incorporated, GTI Contractors LLC, East Valley Disaster Services Incorporated, Summit Restoration and Construction LLC, DH Pace Company Incorporated, Kraut &amp; Heller Painting Services Incorporated, Gaster Painting and Coating Incorporated, A&amp;H Painting Incorporated, True View Window and Glass, Intermountain Lock and Security Supply, Progressive Roofing, Star Roofing Incorporated, Midstate Mechanical Incorporated, Crawford Mechanical Services LLC, Pueblo Mechanical and Controls Incorporated, 365 Mechanical, RRSR of Arizona, Urban Energy Solutions Incorporated, Commonwealth Electric Company of the Midwest, Spectra Electrical Services Incorporated, Viewmaker LLC, Fish Window Cleaning, SDB Incorporated, Titan Restoration of Arizona, B&amp;F Contracting, and Contractors West Incorporated. Madam Clerk, did I miss anyone? No, I'm just kidding. So let's see here. Council, any comments or discussion? If there's no discussion, I would ask for a motion to approve item 6A1.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Keating. I'm going to go ahead and call for a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Aye.
Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A1 passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the section is 6A2, which is to approve one-year contract renewals with Baller Holding Corporation, doing business as Baller Equipment and Velocity Truck Centers for the purchase of city refuse vehicles. Council, any comments or questions on item 6A2?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Adams.
I was just wondering what color we're going to go with the vehicles. I know we've changed colors from blue, green, copper color, and just curious what color we're going to go with.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Anyone from staff on who can answer that question?
Good evening, Mayor Woods. This is Terry Pecars of News4Utilities. I don't have an answer to the councilmember's question, but I will follow up and get an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you so much.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember QB.
Well, I appreciate Councilmember Adams asking that question, actually, because it may seem like, who cares about the color? But it's about, it's about light reflection, and I think trucks with darker colors use more, use more gas. So I really appreciate that question, Councilmember Adams. As long as we're asking questions, how much of this contract, or I know we're not talking about specific purchases relate to alleyway refuse vehicles, because I know they're very expensive as opposed to curbside collection vehicles?
Yes, Councilmember, thank you. These are for just our standard side-load or front-load vehicles that are due for replacement in our capital improvement program. So I don't know specifically that they're associated with alley maintenance versus our typical residential or commercial collection, but I can also check on that as well if you'd like.
If it's the will of the council, I'd like that information, just, you know, in a rule of seven or something.
Sure, I think we can definitely get that information through, you know, an email or sort of, or a council memo, so through the rule of seven. Great. Councilmember QB, any further questions on your end?
No, I'm good. Moved to approve.
All right. It's been moved to approve by Councilmember QB. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland, I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye.
Councilmember QB.
Aye.
Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating.
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A2 passes unanimously, seven to zero. The next item under the session is item 6A3, which is to hold a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub Development Guidelines, a policy-based plan located within the area generally bounded by McClintock Drive to the west, University Drive to the south, Loop 101 to the east, and Rio Salado Parkway to the north. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a speaker card for this item.
That's affirmative, Mayor. I do have one speaker card asked to be read into the record for this item.
Excellent.
Comes from Mr. Ron Tapscott, resident of Tempe. He writes, "The Smith Innovation Hub and Tempe Market Station are physically linked but conceptually contradictory. The Smith Innovation Hub addresses housing, local housing, the inclusion of mixed-use residential development in and around this area aligns with several key priorities of the city to help provide new options for the many workers who commute from outside communities. Specific housing types recommended are loft-style, townhomes, and live-work units where appropriate so as to not conflict with existing business and light industrial operations. These housing options may also help towards the city's need for more affordable and workforce housing units. Additionally, improved commercial and mixed-use presence, increased building height, and new residential density along Rio Salado Parkway extending south to Fifth Street will help the area meet evolving needs while taking advantage of the hub's well-connected location. Examples of residential use to be part of mixed-use development are two- to three-story live-work units, townhomes, and loft-type mixed-use projects, including retail, office, and/or housing. The building should be a maximum of three stories tall and possibly some four stories in appropriate locations." This is from Tempe Smith Industrial Innovation Hub Development Guidelines. "The proposed Tempe Market Station is problematic and too specific in one general conceptual area. Tempe has struggled with and often been at the losing side of developing affordable and workforce housing. The current economy, rising unemployment, and wage suppression have aggravated this problem. Notable in this lacking to mention a few are Camden II, the Maker District, and the proposed Banyan Project on the county island. This proposed project continues this unfortunate trend. Second, the proposed project is in contradiction of envisioned building elevations. The apartments are five stories, wrapping a six-level parking structure on the north and east sides." This is from City of Tempe, Council Meeting Date 10/15/2020, Agenda Item 6B2. "Third, the conceptual vision of the Smith Innovation Hub is highlighted as an area for vision and creativity. Urban Land Institute Arizona Technical Assistance Panel, ULI, also expressed that it would be desirable to have more arts and mixed-use development that include loft-style and live-work type residential development to house residents such as artists and craftspersons." This is from Tempe Smith Industrial Innovation Hub Development Guidelines. "The currently proposed development is not remotely representative of this vision. This is the first of two hearings on the Tempe Market Station. Please find this as a request to overturn the unfortunate DRC ruling and direct the developer to return with a plan that is in keeping with the housing needs of our residents and a plan that has consideration for the artistic initiative of the original vision." And that's it.
Thank you, Carla. Really appreciate that. Just have a quick question for Donna Kennedy, just for clarity on this.
Donna Kennedy, Economic Development here.
Thank you, Donna. Just, you know, I definitely understand and respect Mr. Tapscott's, you know, point there that he was making, but just wanted to make sure. So on this item 6A3, is this pretty much just to simply approve the resolution for the Smith Industrial Hub, but that in no way, shape, or form is directly connected to the Tempe Market Station project? Is it that, that's sort of being considered under a separate item later in this agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that if the council chooses to vote on this tonight, it's merely to authorize us going forward with the Smith Innovation Hub, but at the same time, we would consider the Tempe Market Station differently than this, so.
Correct. And Mayor, if you'd like me to make a statement regarding the guidelines and the comments that were made, I'm happy to now or at another time.
If you'd like to, Donna, that'd be great.
Yes, while the comments that were made are correct as far as the type of housing in the hub, we've taken this plan many times, not only to the neighborhood but the business community, and that's true for the interior of the hub. But the plan also acknowledges that along the transit rail, heights are to be given along with density because it's for planning for the TOD. And to remind everyone, this was pulled out of the overall community development urban core plan with the TOD. So that was all discussed in that. This section's taken out, but there's a strategy in there that says height is to be especially located on, to the Rio Salado Parkway because that is where transit is going. And the general plan maps and the maps in the plan do indicate that higher densities and height of 90 feet at this location are required. So, but interior to the hub, we want to make it more intimate, live-work, and that is absolutely true, those comments that were made. But I just wanted to qualify and clarify that there is an edge to the Smith Hub, and it is for higher densities and height.
Thank you, Donna. Quick question, when you say, the last part of what you said about the urban edge and the higher densities, how high are you referencing when you talk about a little bit higher of a project?
It could go 90 feet, and it depends how the height is calculated, but it shows 90 feet on this site.
Okay.
On this area. So if you refer to the maps and those in the public court looking on this, because we put a lot of work into this plan, and we realized that eventually the streetcars go in there, and that's where it's policy. We always want our densities to occur, but we did not want that type of unit inside the hub because we wanted it more of a character.
So generally speaking, just to make sure I'm understanding, and this is a new guy, you know, three months in speaks, so I apologize. I wasn't here when the Smith Innovation Hub conversation began.
Right.
The conversations about Tempe Market Station, which are later in the agenda. So what you're saying is basically there is, within the Smith Innovation Hub, you know, a project that was sort of maybe a four or five-story multifamily complex would not be allowed because it frankly would not meet the vision of what we're trying to accomplish or what the stated vision of the city is. But the only place where this kind of development, you know, could even be considered potentially, Smith, Tempe Market Station, or anything else, quite honestly, would be at the urban edge where heightened density is allowed.
Correct. Four to five stories or four and under inside the hub, but the arterial parkway next to a rail line is to go taller, correct, is the edge.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few questions for Donna. Donna, it's my understanding that this was a 6-1 vote in favor at DRC, is that correct?
DRC did recommend approval for the project, correct. They went through and followed through with asking appropriate questions as far as, did they have neighborhood meetings, was there any opposition, et cetera, and there was not. So it did go through the DRC, correct?
Okay, and it was, it was a 6-1 vote in favor at the DRC, correct? That's my.
I believe it was 6-1.
A quick question, though, Donna, just, I'm sorry to interrupt Councilmember Adams as well.
That's okay.
Are we talking about a 6-1 vote for the Tempe Market Station project or a 6-1 vote for the Smith Innovation Hub?
Yes, for the market station. This is for the hub plan itself.
Okay, right. Yeah, let me make sure that that, yeah. So the 6-1 vote is referencing the item later in the agenda, not the item in front of us at this very moment.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got ahead of myself.
Not a problem.
Thanks for pulling in the reins.
Yeah, this is for the vision and the guidelines for this area as part of our Innovation Hub strategy. So similar to the Tempe Market, or now that I see here, I'm doing it now, similar to the Maker District, Smith Hub has its own plans as well. So this is what this is bringing forward.
Okay. Well, I'm excited for the project, and Donna, you are doing such a great job. So thank you so much for bringing this forward and explaining it to us.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, sorry, I'm trying to video, but forget it. So yeah, Donna, thank you. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So yeah, no, I understand, and there's like sort of this integration of the two, the project and the Smith Innovation, Industrial Innovation Hub. But I do note that in the guidelines, I understand that the hub is, it's guidelines, it's not requirements, but it does say, "Specific housing types recommended are loft-style, townhomes, and live-work units where appropriate." So it's not to conflict with business and light industrial operations. "These housing options may also help towards the city's need for more affordable and workforce housing units." So I know that was discussed, the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub, we all were in her discussion about the applicability of affordable and workforce housing. And so when you do mention that increased height and density are, you know, acceptable or seen as, you know, as parallel with this goal, it's also mentioned, affordable housing, workforce housing is also mentioned too. So I just wanted to put that.
Yes, absolutely. Where appropriate is here as well. Because it's a district, because we want to respect the industrial uses that are already there. So, you know, it's a. we want to respect the industrial uses that are already there. So, you know, it's a case-by-case scenario, and where appropriate is correct.
So where, so where appropriate, is that the rub? I mean, what's?
No, we work with our housing department and look at strategy or with Housing with Levon, and they want to make sure there's certain qualifications that meet the guidelines for their affordable housing as well. But where appropriate too, it could, it's just not a given for every site. I guess that's the point I want to make, because there might be industrial use right next door, which we would not want to put it.
I understand. I'll wait and ask my questions about appropriateness with the project that we're going to consider later on in the meeting. I'll wait and ask then. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Uh, Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Donna, I just want to say that I took some time and read through the Apache Character Area Plan, and I really appreciate how a lot of the things that you drew in or that's drawn into the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub Development Guidelines reflected what the neighbors and the residents around that area would like to see, specifically in item number 10. But I just want to say I like the fact that if you look at all the time that people put into the character area plans, that you are taking that and moving that forward with this plan. So I just want to tell you, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's a strategy we have, and it's a multi-layer, but yes, thank you for reading that. That is definitely correct.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Uh, Councilmember Navarro?
No, thank you, Mayor. No, Donna, no, I want to say thank you to you for taking clarity to answer those questions. I know you and your team have put a lot of effort into this area on the plan and potential of what it can be. I know that obviously for the council, we do want to make sure that we get affordability in various areas throughout our community and making sure that we have those opportunities for a variety of different residents. I also do know we'll be having a separate discussion. I want to kind of stay focused on this discussion about the, just the plan itself and what we foresee within the plan. And I have to say, I highly support it. I think this is a real high-potential area to really make an organic project, an artistic, as been said, even with Mr. Tapscott's comments on the likelihood of what this area could provide and the character that it can provide. So I just want to say I support it. I just want to keep everyone, and hopefully everyone's on track, that we have another discussion on other issues. And for this issue and for this item, I think this is a great plan, and I'd like to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Appreciate that. Yeah, just, you know, sort of, yeah, once again, reminding everyone that, yeah, this is just simply to adopt the development guidelines for the Smith Innovation Hub, and there'll be an item later on regarding the specific Tempe Market Station project. With that said, Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hey, thanks, Donna. I mean, I know innovation hubs are definitely the way to the future, and I think it's just really good for us to be able to be transparent in what we're trying to create within the different areas and to really understand, I think, what can happen and what that vision looks like. So I love this idea. I think it's really great. I know you guys have worked really hard in it, hard on it, and it's really thorough. I just have a couple of questions, and it's kind of just more philosophical. I know one of the things that we've talked about over the years since I've been on council are these live-work units, right? And I guess I haven't really had any feedback into how those are working, because there was a time and place when a lot of them were empty and a lot of those different developments. So I, and it doesn't, you don't have to say it now, because it's not going to prevent me from moving forward with this, because I think this is a great idea. I just want to make sure that that's something that we want to continue to focus on. I'm just not really sure I understand the complete benefit of that and, you know, how those have been occupied, if they're occupied, what the vacancy rates are like. So, I mean, I don't want to get tied into something that may not be the way to the future. So I don't know if there's a way that maybe you can kind of just address that and maybe get back to me on that. If, you know, I don't know, Mayor, how that works, or if Donna, you have an answer. That would be my first question. My second question would be, you know, we talked, you talk in there, there's another section a little bit about housing, right? And I think our goal for housing is really to maintain our mix of housing as we move forward. So how are you doing that? How are you ensuring that's going to happen, not just within the Smith Hub, but, you know, all the innovation hubs as we move forward? So those two questions, I think, are really important to me. If there's a way that you have an answer now, that would be great. If it's something that you need to get back to me on, that's fine, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. I do have an answer for both of those questions. First of all, your live-work. What we did find coming out when we reached out to our businesses and also to our arts district, they're very excited to know if they could have a studio, an art studio, and work in it and live in the same type of complex. And we've noticed around the country that some of the artisans, when we do find the right developer to provide a housing stock that has that urban edge, if you will, to it, to adapt new buildings and create that environment for the artists, this would be an area to do it. So we're trying to promote art in this district, so we're trying to keep that as an open possibility. So that's why we added in there, just because of the outreach that we did. And as far as the housing type and mix, you're right, because we've got not only our Innovation Hub here, but we got the Novus Innovation Hub right adjacent to us. So we feel, though, the city could be a big participant in this area to really ramp up or maybe find a right property to do an affordable project, because then we've covered all bases in this one small hub. So we're constantly looking. We're working with other departments. We're working not only with Levon but with Community Development, our real estate manager, just to kind of keep an eye out for properties that might come that might be good opportunities for the city.
Oh, I appreciate that. I mean, especially the information on those live-work units, because they were super popular for a while, and we couldn't figure out how to fill them up. And so I know it's been back and forth. So I appreciate that. I think that's great. I love the fact that you got your pulse on the mix of housing. I guess my follow-up question to that would be, is when you think about keeping our mix of housing as we move forward, are you thinking that that's going to be in separate developments? That the mix will not happen within each development? Are you limiting yourself to making, to encouraging developments for different types of housing? I guess that's my question, if that makes sense.
Yes, that's an excellent question, because believe it or not, that is the question that's the boots on the ground, so to speak. Do you include different types of incomes in one project, or do you have different types of developments or product type around the city? So it's interesting you should say that some prefer, there's been case studies like in Chicago where it originally started, where the mix of income are in one unit, and it went well for the first couple of years, but at the end of the day, they found that maybe it is good to have the mix of product type, because then people interact better, let's put it that way. I'll phrase it that way. But I do still believe a mix of income in one unit were appropriate, and with the right type of mix and the right developer, it could work. And, but then there's other projects that maybe we have two different separate. So I think these are ongoing conversations to have, and maybe with council retreat to talk about this housing and bring our housing division in, and maybe do some more research on best practices on that, because I've heard both.
Right. I agree. I appreciate that, and I just want to make sure that we're all sending the same message. I think that's really important, and, you know, I look forward to being on the same. I think we all want the same thing.
We do.
It's just a matter of how we're getting there, and I think it's just really important that we nail that down, you know, more sooner than later. But, you know, I appreciate the work. I think this is really great to have here. And I tell you what, I love the industrial look. It's kind of one of my things. So I'm super excited to really see what can happen in this area. I think it can be super innovative, but really in an industrial way. It's going to be great. So thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Councilmember QB?
I just wanted to add to the conversation. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, for bringing it up. But I know in the work that I do with Startup Center for Affordable Homes in the Family at ASU, that there's a lot of literature out there about how mixed developments, a range of housing, is leads to the healthiest, strongest communities, most resilient communities. And I'm happy to rustle up some academic literature that talks exactly to that issue. But thank you. I do support the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub concept. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember QB? Any other members of council have any comments or questions for Donna?
Mayor, I do?
Yes, Councilmember Adams?
I just want to, it's not really a question, but Donna, we have a lot of workers coming in now, and companies coming, moving into Tempe, because it's the place to be. And it's my assumption that it's better for our workers to be able to stay in Tempe, be located here, so they spend their paychecks and their free time and have fun in our city. Is that correct?
Um, it's the environment we're creating, and it's part of our business attraction. When we hear from employers that are bringing in their employees, they love that sense of place, and they prefer to live in Tempe, because you're correct, it helps all around with our traffic, et cetera. If we can get them to live here, once they get their jobs and be a contributing citizen into our community, to create that sustainable economy where we have all levels of income housing into our community, yes.
Okay, and they can walk and bike to work as a result, too, correct?
Look, we look at that, too. That is a checklist that we want to keep it to where either it's access to public transit or bike lanes. And when we offer that to employees, I mean, that's why they come here, is because we have those options.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any other members of council, any comments or questions for Donna? All right. Thank you so much. Our hearing none. Thank you, Donna. Really appreciate it. Do I have a motion for Item 6A3?
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by, moved by Councilmember QB. A second?
Second.
Second, sounds like, well, something is seconded by everybody. I'll give a second to Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Um, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote here. Um, Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 6A3 passes seven to zero. All right, next up here is Item 6A4, which is to hold an initial public hearing and invite public comment on the proposed annexation of a parcel of property within Maricopa County limits and located at 1230 West Caroline Lane. Madam Clerk, I believe we just received a card on this item.
We did, Mayor. This one did come in a little late. With your permission, I'll read it into the record.
Absolutely. Yes, please.
It is from Chris Mitchell. Chris writes, "Hello, I'm intending to reject the annexation of 1230 West Caroline Lane regarding case number ANX20-001. This would be, this would cause detrimental traffic problems for Caroline Lane and Priest Drive. There would be fire and safety issues with getting emergency vehicles in or out of this community. This would cause major traffic for the existing homeowners. Mark Taylor is a 596-unit apartment complex, the New Rhythm Community with 300-plus homes. These two communities on Priest and Caroline are a problem already, especially when you have Tempe Village with 120 homes and homes on the County Island. Please do not approve the 30-plus homes on the 3.5-acre parcel off of Caroline. We have 100-plus signatures and are going on a petition. There will soon be a couple hundred residents of Tempe that are against this annexation of 1230 West Caroline Lane." Mayor, that's, we have submitted for this item.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carla. Really appreciate that. And just wanted to note for the record, just from my understanding as well, this is actually, once again, this item is regarding the annexation, not the particular Mark Taylor development that was referenced in the gentleman's comment card, just to make sure, just for the council's clarification. So this item would be solely on the annexation itself. Um, any other comments from council, questions about 6A4? I hear wind, so let's see. Councilmember QB?
Well, Mr. Mayor, are we going to have a proposal from there, from someone explaining why it's necessary?
Uh, regarding the annexation itself?
Right, what, the benefits?
Definitely, sure. Is there anyone from staff that can come up and speak to this? Uh, it looks like Ryan LeVek is here. Ryan?
Yes, Mayor, council members, if Julian Dreesang is available, he can speak specifically on the reason why we're having this public hearing for a comment period for the annexation process. I can certainly speak on any items that relates to the future development requests, but that will be held at a later time. We do not yet have a formal submittal for development application, but the applicant with the owner's representation is coming forward with the annexation request at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Julian?
Mayor, council, thank you very much. My name is Julian Dreesang. I'm the city engineer for the city, and our engineering group is pursuing this annexation process. So at this point, this is just a single property in Maricopa County that is requesting to be annexed by the city. As Ryan alluded to, this is not, at this point, any kind of development. There will be four more opportunities for the residents of Tempe to weigh in on any potential future development, including public meeting, DRC, and two meetings at the council for approval. So at this point, this is strictly just a request from a property owner to be annexed into the city of Tempe.
Thank you, Julian. So just, you know, I'm probably going to repeat what you just said. So basically, a property owner here at 1230 West Caroline Lane in Tempe came to the city of Tempe and requested to be annexed by the city.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other council members, comments, or questions for either Julian or Ryan? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion regarding this item?
Is it a first?
Um.
Second?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Yes?
I don't believe there is a vote that needs to be taken on Item 6A4 this evening. I believe it's an initial public hearing and invitation for public comment only. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. My apologies. All right. So we'll just go ahead and close up, close up the public hearing on that and move on to Item 6A5. So, which is to approve a transfer of budget appropriation from the General Fund Non-Departmental Budget to the Economic Development Department Restricted Revenue Cost Center Budget to provide budget appropriation for the anticipated expenses to be incurred for the Small Business Grant Program as part of the economic recovery and workforce development COVID recovery initiatives. Council, any comments or discussions on Item 6A5?
Need to approve?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor, what, I'm sorry, thank you. Just moved to approve.
Second?
Okay, so moved by Councilmember Navarro and moved by, seconded by Councilmember QB? I'm going to go ahead and take a roll call vote here. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember QB?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating? Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That item passes seven to zero. Okay, the next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction in first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for October 29, 2020. Item B, ordinances items for introduction in first public hearing. First item under the section is 6B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a waterline easement located at 1935 East Apache Boulevard, west of Martin Lane, and south of Apache Boulevard. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 29, 2020. Madam Clerk, any comments received from the public regarding this item?
None for this item, Mayor.
Great. Any council members wish to speak on this?
Move to approve.
All right, moved by Vice Mayor Keating. Do I have a second?
A second.
Actually, no vote will be taken here. I apologize on that one. So, so this, so you have no vote on this one, so. So we're just going to go ahead and move to the next item if there's no other further comments or questions. Okay? Next item under the section is Item 6B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan, general plan land use map amendment from commercial to mixed use, and a residential density map amendment from medium-high, which is up to 25 dwelling units per acre, to high-density, up to 65 dwelling units per acre. Adopt ordinance for a zoning map amendment for PCC-2 to MU4 and an amended planned area development overlay, and approve a development plan review for a five-story, 310-unit multifamily development for Tempe Market Station located at 1953 East Rio Salado Parkway. for Tempe Market Station located at 1953 East Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Barry Riddell LLC. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 29th, 2020. Madam Clerk, do I have any cards on this item?
No submissions for this item, Mayor.
Great. Is the applicant available to make a request? I mean, to make a statement? Let's see, it's one of the check. Is the applicant for this item, uh, prepared to make a statement about this?
Mr. Mayor, I need some assistance on knowing exactly who to elevate to.
Uh, I believe it would be, I believe it would be Wendy Riddell.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ah, wonderful. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes, Wendy.
Great. Uh, this is Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Trammell Crow. Can you see the presentation we have up in front?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, so if I could, I'll run through that. Um, we are here this evening, I know it was quite a mouthful, but on behalf of Trammell Crow for a GPA, general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, PAD amendment, and site plan approval. You've got it? So I'm very excited to be here this evening on behalf of Trammell Crow. It's, um, known as High Street Residential. Just to give you a little bit of background on them, they're a publicly traded company. They're independently operated subsidiary of CBRE, which is the world's largest real estate services firm. Number 32 on Forbes 2020 Just 100 list, named on Fortune's Most Admired Companies eight years in a row. And this is their very first project in Tempe. So these images you see here just give you, um, a sense of the kind of quality and design that they typically utilize. Uh, and that frankly, I'm excited to see come to Tempe. Next slide, please. Again, a little bit of background, some pretty impressive awards when you look across the board as a multifamily developer, um, for their design and for a number of the projects that they've done. Next slide, please. So the site, I know this council is very familiar with the site. This is actually my third time coming back before you and I think this time we finally have it right um, to zone this particular piece. We're immediately on Rio Salado directly across, although it's really the kind of back door of Tempe Market Station. And very excited to be part of the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub. Next. So again, just a quick reminder, general plan, rezoning, PAD amendment, and then site plan approval. Next slide. So the general plan amendment, um, it's actually rather interesting that it's also on your agenda tonight as part of the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub guidelines. Part of that is a general plan amendment for this high-density residential, which is precisely what we're seeking here. So if I take a step back and actually start first with your general plan, I would suggest to you that everything we're proposing is entirely consistent and anticipated by your, your general plan. We're located at the, oh, one more back if you would. We're located at the 101202 interchange, which supports new residential and commercial with hubs at sufficient densities. Next. And again, we're within a 101202 interchange growth area where it talks about south of Rio Salado Parkway, that the older industrial buildings are targeted for rehabilitation, redevelopment as commercial mixed use and an employment center. And again, you see the high-density residential appropriate here, specifically calling out in the general plan, the proximity to employment, entertainment, and pedestrian activities encouraging interaction, creating the urban environment. Located between the marketplace, Rio 2100, obviously part of the Smith Industrial Hub, ideal for this increased density. Next. Uh, and soon, certainly not to be forgotten, of course, the Apache Character Area Plan. When you take a look at that as well, it talks about Tempe's vision for a 20-minute city. This gives you an idea of the streetscape that you'll be seeing along Rio Salado. Uh, what will ultimately be the future streetcar route and how those pieces work together. Notice the separated sidewalk, notice the shade, uh, and making a much more pedestrian-friendly environment. Next. And then, of course, the Smith Innovation Hub. Talks about high-density residential located where pedestrian improvements are planned. Again, the idea is to maximize the investment and promote the 20-minute city concept. It's really to, it, it makes a lot of sense. There's a significant amount of investment that the city has made in infrastructure, in the streetcar, and it's really to try to maximize that investment and make sure that it's a success. Next. Now, if you look at our particular site, we really are the gateway to the Smith Innovation Hub. We are connected in all various types of form, from pedestrian, bus, bus route, streetcar orbit. And we're very excited, frankly, to be the pioneers here and be the first ones coming in with a residential project into the Smith Innovation Hub. Next. So the plan, I know there was a little bit of discussion earlier, but when you look at the entire plan in a whole, it specifically talks about increased building height and new residential, residential density along Rio Salado Parkway extending south of Fifth Street will help the area meet the evolving needs while taking advantage of the hub's well-connected location. And by the way, that's further evidenced, if you go to the next slide, by the fact that in that very same document that the council approved tonight was this map. And this map shows you that the high-density residential, up to 65 dwelling units per acre, is exactly part of the plan here. Um, was also discussed, the, the height, the maximum height that's suggested and was approved now as part of that plan is up to 90 feet in height. So again, all of this is very consistent with the goals and visions of the Smith Innovation Hub. Next. So as you look at our zoning request, we are requesting to be, um, mixed use as opposed to traditional commercial. Next slide. So when you take a look at this, it's a really a horizontal, horizontally-integrated mixed use. Very appropriate here as we look to the back of Tempe Marketplace. Again, part of these long-range planning goals for height and intensity, but maintaining that mixed use within the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub. Next. And the MU4 allows unlimited housing density in a mixed-use setting with commercial, as we're proposing. And so I know these plans are a little bit difficult to read. I, I do apologize for that. But I wanted to just show you, when you look at the site, this is what the site is approved for today. You see the retail, you see the restaurant, was intended to be more of that convenience retail. But we think ultimately with what's planned for streetcar and the vision now for the entire Smith Industrial Innovation Hub, that bringing that high density here really helps to fulfill, uh, the goals of that plan better than how the site is entitled today. Next. So again, you'll see what we're doing is replacing that, a large portion of that, with the multifamily project, but maintaining that commercial, a little bit of that commercial up along Rio Salado. 310-unit multifamily project. Next. So as you look at the PAD, we're lots one to four. So again, this just shows you the new plan replacing the old plan, replaces the drive-through, ancillary retail with that multifamily. Next. And again, just to give you a little context, we're moving one drive-through, responding to the market demand and the planning goals. Gives you a sense of what that front would actually look like up along Rio Salado Parkway. So the overall PAD modifications, of course, asking for the additional density. Um, again, fulfilling the general plan goal, what was shown in the Smith Innovation Hub. Um, also asking for the increase in height, again, very consistent with the goals, Smith Innovation Hub allowing up to 90 feet in height. Uh, a modest request for lot coverage increase as well as landscaping and some adjustments to setbacks. Next. And then finally, uh, on to our site plan approval. Next slide. So we're very pleased to receive the approval of the Development Review Commission, six to one, and that they endorse this plan. We're very excited about this plan. This gives you an idea when you look at the renderings. Five-story apartments, 310 dwelling units. Again, you see that nicely landscaped streetscape along Rio Salado. Next. This gives you a, a different vantage point. So we've now, um, moved a little closer to the freeway. Looking back, again, you see this, the bus route that will have the connectivity there. You see where it'll be a future streetcar. You see that sidewalk. You see the landscaping. You see that nice entry. And then the real breakup in the building and the, the different types of articulation and the different types of materials that we utilized. Next. And just a little different view here from the east. View from the north, that entrance feature again, with the open area, common area up above. Next. And this will be a very well amenitized, um, facility. Dog park, pool, spa, fitness center, gym, interior courtyard, bike storage, barbecue areas, balconies, padas. Um, this is really intended to be a, a place people want to come and stay and enjoy and enjoy Tempe. Next. So I know there's, um, a lot of discussion, as there often is here, about affordable and workforce housing. This is not affordable or workforce housing project, where, but we're also not seeking any incentives. None are requested here. We're really fulfilling the goals and the vision set forth in the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub. And we think really responding to the needs that we see here in the community. I mean, I, I don't have to tell this council that Tempe has done some pretty great things and has brought a lot of jobs to this area with what you've done with Freedom Financial. You've got, you know, 4,000 employee business park and then what's planned at ASU's Nova, Novus Innovation Corridor, directly west. But we think there's a tremendous need for this type of housing. Uh, we also think it helps with the traffic on Rio Salado. You start to get people, uh, living, working, playing, and enjoying Tempe. And so with that, uh, we hope that, uh, we will obtain your approval at the next city council hearing, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have in the meantime.
Thank you so much, Wendy. Really appreciate it. I see Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Wendy, for the excellent presentation. I'm, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's, it's, uh, great. I do want to ask our, uh, our, just to, um, make sure we're all good on this, is ask our city attorney about, uh, is it okay to like rezone this section? And we're not, it's not gonna be like a slippery slope with other sections of town. Uh, Judy, if you can just, um, answer that, that would be great.
Yeah. So thank you, council member. I think each specific project that comes forward seeking separate approvals in the regulatory process would not necessarily cause a slippery slope. I think that the, um, uh, Smith Industrial Innovation Hub, rezoning and general plan amendment will provide an opportunity for future development in this area, but this is a separate regulatory process. So no, I didn't, I do not believe it would cause any kind of slippery slope. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thanks, thanks Judy. And, uh, Wendy, thanks again for this, uh, great presentation. And I think it's a great project, the, uh, ideal location and, uh, keeping the, uh, the new employees that are coming to Tempe, uh, uh, living and working in Tempe. So thanks and you have my support.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Uh, Councilmember Navarro?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, love the presentation, Wendy. Uh, for that corner. Obviously, we're going through a process to amend, uh, what the use of the property was slated for originally. Then obviously you had some retail on it and did this modification. And then rolled up the egg before the chicken as we have a vote here just after, pretty much after this one about, uh, the, um, change of 2040 plan for this area, for the Smith Innovation, uh, area to accommodate basically for what you're asking for, which, you know, it's, it's kind of an interesting conversation as we have this topic. Um, I'm just gonna say with this project, I know that there has been voiced opinions about affordability and affordability in this area and how that would benefit, um, obviously the Smith Innovation Hub, which I do believe, um, with the area, it's the whole area, we're gonna have that opportunity to have some affordability in there. And I'll say this, with what you guys are proposing and the market rate that you guys are proposing at, and, and I would imagine the market is going to always dictate rates. As we are going through a downturn in the economy, as we, as we've seen right now, we're also seeing, uh, Class A office space being subleased at lower rates because of the downturn. So the market does start to drive rates and even rates in apartment complex to obtain, obviously, what they need is, you know, people in those units. So those things do, do happen and, and they happen organically on the market rate stuff. Obviously, this is not affordability and, or it's not dedicated affordability because the complexity, um, of this is, is basically you're paying pretty much high premiums for the land, uh, that you're on because it's on, uh, a TOD zoning. You're gonna have a streetcar. You have close proximity to the freeways, close proximity to our downtown area. Uh, you're right across the street from a, uh, great, uh, marketplace, which, you know, with that being said, um, all those things factor into the price of the property. We have great success on a property that we own and we can make affordability out of our property. That's when we win because we win because we own it and we can dictate that affordability in perpetuity uh, for that, for that property. In addition, when we have successes, when we have property that is either, I don't want to say discounted, but it is done, uh, um, it, it is, it is, the property is, is affordable to provide affordability. We've seen projects in Mesa and Tempe with senior living, that's affordable senior living. But those were deals that were done that had extreme benefits to make it affordable for those projects to live in perpetuity, um, with those developers. Different concept. So it's, it's the complexity of this is, in my mind is, this is probably what's gonna pencil out and make sense. And also it is gonna also provide, um, much-needed apartment space in this area. And obviously, this is a starting point for the Smith Innovation Hub, which is gonna be, in my opinion, hopefully this organic, organic, artistic, innovative, IT, whatever it may be. And it's gonna have that affordability in it, which I think is gonna be a benefit. And that's gonna be on the interior. When we look at those properties, I'm hoping that money that we can obtain from, uh, developments like this and other developments that put into a affordability fund so that we can invest in properties internally in the, in the Smith Hub or other locations, then we have our abilities to keep, to get those properties for residents that have, that can maintain, can work in the area, can do all those benefits. So I'm not gonna say that this property alone is gonna ruin the whole Smith Hub. That's my belief. I think this property alone is gonna enhance the Smith Hub and hopefully, and, and hopefully encourage us or encourage other developments that we, we get throughout the city to obtain money to, uh, direct towards buying property within that hub so we can do that affordability. So I, I, I do appreciate what you guys are doing. I know we'll have a discussion on this. That's my belief on, on this property. I think it's a start of a gateway to what we want to see as an innovation hub. Uh, if I look at the property at night, the, the other concerns or one wish, I guess, I like your design. I like the layout, is we saw great success, um, when we had an apartment complex in South Tempe on Baseline and, and Lake Shore, which was very contentious, but we made a better product out of it. But the flow from the apartment complex into the retail area, uh, really translated well. So with that being said, uh, with, with what's potentially in the future for the retail, I hope the flow translates well with that apartment, um, community. Not that it looks like a bunch of parking lots and then, you know, this and that. But I hope the feel of those other retail buildings really, and/or hotel, if that does come to fruition. And if it doesn't, what other retail opportunity might be there? Uh, I hope it really translates well with the flow of the apartment complex. So I want to state that and, uh, I support this.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. And, uh, and we agree with you. Our, you know, our focus on the design so far has been on the multifamily, but making sure there, there is that integration and that connectivity, we, we would certainly agree. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Wendy. Um, presentation. And I know you, you referenced a lot, the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub. And, but you didn't necessarily reference the discussion about affordable and workforce housing. That's to, I think, the, the residents' mind who attended all those meetings, pretty central to the, to the hub idea. And, um, Councilmember Navarro mentioned TOD, Transit-Oriented Development. Well, all over the country, communities all across the US are using transit, transit-oriented development to develop affordable housing. It's like, if not there, where? If not now, when? And, um, I'm just attaching here the Affordable Housing Act Statement, which is now required of developers when they bring a project to council. by developers when they bring a project to council. It wasn't in a packet, and so it was sent out under what we call Rule 7 to everyone this afternoon. But as you can see, the rents are for a studio between $1450 and $1,500 a month, one bedrooms, $1,500 to $1,700, two bedrooms, $50 to $2,350. So we're talking about some pretty, pretty high rents. I mean, it's market rate, you know, there's no temporary rate, but if this is the gateway to the Smith Industrial, one of the founding sort of principles and guidelines, it's a policy document, it's not a requirement, but if one of the founding guidelines is that we want to see some mixed affordable housing, pedestrian and walking, we want to see tree-laid streets in a community, it's like, this is not that. And to me, it's not, I think it is a domino that falls. The very first project of the Smith Industrial Innovation Hub is a market rate project that does not include some aspect of affordable or workforce housing. To me, that's profoundly disappointing. And, you know, this is, this is a TOD, so I don't know if you've looked at other options. And I've heard rumors that you might be willing to contribute to our affiliate, to the Affordable Housing affiliate, which is obviously desirable if there's going to be no affordable workforce housing, but I've heard rumors about that and rumors that there will or will not be the artistic elements that are supposed to also be part of the Smith, the Smith Industrial Hub. So no, I'm still open to changes being made. I don't want to say right now, I'm not going to support it, but I'm profoundly disappointed that the very first project gets brought to us. You're asking for a lot. You're asking for a lot in terms of zoning changes, but in fact, what is the public benefit besides putting some properties on the tax rolls? I get that that brings us money. That is all, that has been our standard operating procedure for years, that we welcome that. But I thought we were taking a new direction with the city of Tempe. We're really focused on affordable housing and what we can to really encourage that development. So I guess I'll ask you to respond to that. I'd like to hear Donna say why this is not an appropriate place for affordable housing because appropriateness came up when she talked about the Smith Industrial Hub. So I'd like to hear why it's not appropriate. And you'd be disappointed when you mention, you've got a lot of roof space there, and I'd love to see some solar there in this day and age. I mean, I would think since you're building this for this year, but for future years, you want to see some solar, solar deployment on that vast expanse of roof that you have. So we address the solar and the affordability, and if we could have Donna address affordable, affordability in relationship to the discussion she had about what's appropriate. Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cubey. I want to, so this is not an affordable or workforce housing project. We really feel that there is a lot of job growth that's happened, in particular in this area, and that having this, a market rate project here, really at a prime location when you're maximizing, you know, right off the TOD is what is most appropriate. But I did want to at least tell you that, and you had kindly pulled up the matrix that showed the rents. We did a very deep dive on that, and when you use those rents, mind you, you're using the lower end of the rent range that we show up there, and when you look at the workforce for 110% of AMI and 120% of AMI today, those units, actually 308 out of the 310, qualify under your matrix for workforce housing.
To that point, Wendy, to that point, I mean, you can look at the very top scale. I mean, where most workforce housing projects are developed, there's a range of workforce pricing within that, but to it is a restricted deed, so a term of affordability, because what might be market rate now, what might seem workforce rate now, it's because that area is depressed, and another couple of years rents will go up high if there's no restricted deed or covenant. So I just wanted to make that.
Mayor Cubey, Councilwoman Cubey, you are absolutely correct, and I'm not proposing a deed restriction here. So I would not dispute actually anything you just said. I would point out, however, that by bringing all these additional units onto the market, you are immediately creating some workforce housing, and by creating additional housing altogether, I think you ultimately are going to be creating more workforce and affordable housing within the community, just not necessarily at this particular location.
To that point, to that point, at this particular time, the whole demand and supply model has been disputed a lot, not just in peer review literature, but by a lot of nonprofit organizations, because you see that trickle-down effect, it really takes years to be, to be effective, to actually result in these rents. It can actually result in more gentrification and raise rents, otherwise there's not a lot of housing right around here, so that's not as germane to the discussion. But I'm, you know, I'd love to have a debate with you about supply and demand as it relates to housing pricing.
Mayor, Councilwoman Cubey, I'm quite confident I would prefer not to debate you. So I'm teasing, of course. I'm happy to discuss this with you. I just hear that is not part of what we have planned here. Unfortunately, we've also taken a look at solar, and we really don't think that solar at this particular project makes sense. We do believe we're maximizing other ways that the project is sustainable, in particular by its location, and by creating a place where people hopefully come, stop using their cars, and start living and enjoying and staying in Tempe.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to have a discussion back and forth. I really appreciate that. So when is solar, when and where, and when and where is affordable workforce housing and mixed housing? You know, I'm not saying affordable housing project, I'm not saying workforce housing project, but just to have some of that, if not here, where? If not now, when? And that applies to the solar argument as well.
You know, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cubey, I think that's more a discussion ultimately for the council and not really for me to answer. I know you had a question for Donna as well, so I'll cede the floor to her if you would.
Sounds good. Donna?
Okay, Mayor, Councilmember Cubey, yes, I did mention case by case, and the reason I mentioned it, we have to remember, I was talking about the whole area. We can't pop a residential unit right next to an industrial user that, let's just say, may be an auto mechanic and having chemicals. So what I meant by that is the planner, depending on where it's going to go, long-term throughout the whole hub area, we have to analyze what's existing and where appropriate that a housing unit would fit in. To have that mix and that balance, like we're seeing now, though, a lot of the industrial buildings are turning into office and retail. So those areas, yes. And so that's all I meant, is that I didn't want to give the wrong impression that we can put it anywhere.
Oh, so, but to distinguish, you were talking about housing, appropriateness of housing in the hub as opposed to other uses, but not necessarily affordable or workforce housing because, you see, if it's an industrial area that has fumes and all, you wouldn't want to have market rate housing either, it'd be less likely. So it's not so much about the appropriateness of affordable or workforce housing, which is housing, period.
Correct. You know, when our housing comes in, I just meant in general, because you have to consider all factors, whether a housing is affordable, housing is housing, but we want to make sure it's a safe project moving into.
So, and Mr. Mayor, I really do appreciate the support, to ask these tough questions. It's our only time. Usually, we have developers meet with us ahead of time, we can ask a lot of questions, and so now this is the only opportunity. So I do really appreciate your preparedness here, but I just want to ask Donna about the art elements, what's happening, what's happening if there's no affordable workforce housing, a tentative commitment to our affordable housing affiliate, is that happening?
I'm sorry, you broke out. I'm not sure I heard the whole question. My apologies.
When you and I spoke previously, there was mention that there may be a contribution offered to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, our affiliate, our nonprofit affiliate, and you also mentioned about an art element, but it's very much a part of the Smith Industrial Hub concept is art, and so can you talk about those two possibilities as we move forward with this project?
Actually, I may be able to jump in on that one. That was a discussion, you know, previously, we had art that was contemplated as part of the retail. When it shifts under the ordinance to multifamily, that obligation changes, but we had talked about still, you know, looking at making that contribution nonetheless. I think that that got lost somewhere between DRC and city council. So between this hearing and the next, Councilwoman Cubey, I'm happy to get that addressed and get that solidified as part of this proposal.
Thank you. I've taken too much of your time. Thank you.
Not at all, Councilmember Cubey. Really appreciate, actually, this is the time to ask these questions. So no, I appreciate you asking them. Next up, we've got Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
You, Mayor, just a couple of things. I want to ask a couple of questions to staff, first and foremost, if that's okay. And I don't know who's here to answer that, but in regards to these entitlement changes, what is the possible max height of this project? So is it like up to 200 feet?
I can answer that if staff's not, I mean, the maximum height here is 75 feet.
No, I know, that's for your project, right?
Oh, okay.
But I'm just saying, with the entitlements that you're asking for, what could be the height max?
I believe Ryan or Chad might be on the line.
Yeah, I guess.
Oh, I like it when I ask a question, nobody knows the answer, too. It's good.
Well, this is Chad, and I'll give it a shot, Councilmember. So the PAD right now is restricting, I think what Wendy was referring to, is this PAD approval restricts them to the plan they've got in place.
Okay.
And at 75 feet. The other general plan things that we've been considering tonight would contemplate a height of 90 feet. That would be the Smith Hub.
Okay, got it. And so Chad, while I have you on the phone, I first want to say currently, right now, this particular development does not meet the general plan without us making any changes or adjustments.
That's correct.
Okay. It does fall in the new guidelines that we've moved forward with, with the Smith Hub, correct?
Yes.
And it could possibly fall into some changes if the Urban Core Master Plan is brought back with changes recommended, correct?
Well, the Smith Hub, approving of the Smith Hub would kind of take this piece of dirt out of that equation because it's already done essentially.
Okay. Well, but those aren't necessarily, they're not entitled by any means, then they're just guidelines.
Yes, that's just the general plan. But that's all, when it was a part of the broader effort, the Urban Core Plan.
Yeah.
It was all that was proposed here as well.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's helpful. I was just kind of curious, and I, you know, my two cents is just a couple of things, right? I, I'm really excited about the Smith Hub. I think that our innovation hubs are a really fantastic and great idea, and I think when we create, I think, you know, Councilmember Navarro mentioned this project being a gateway and being really essential, I think, to the beginning of what the Smith Hub could be. And I will say, based on that, this is really not what I expected to see. I think it's a really nice apartment complex. I bet you to live there is pretty phenomenal. I love the fact that Tramal Pro wants to do, to be a partner and be in Tempe. So Wendy, thank you to you and your team for bringing them here, and I want to try to find a way that, you know, we can kind of all come together and find something that we can all really be proud of. I guess when I think of the Smith Innovation Hub, I really thought of it as being more industrial, something different and unique. And honestly, I don't see anything different and unique about this. And I do believe there is some comments when I read through the documents about, you know, you talk a lot about a 20-minute city and being able to provide housing for people that work in the immediate area. Well, I do kind of wonder, you know, if that's even really what we're trying to obtain because I think there's some mention of a lot of employment as like service sector positions that are around there, and I just don't think that they would make enough money to meet those rents. So I really truly worry about the rents being at the high end of workforce, at that 120, 110, 120% mark, which is, you know, really high with nothing ensuring that they would even stay that way for any number of years. So I want to kind of take some responsibility, too, if, you know, the thought that, and it's never been my thought process in the way, maybe we can express it better, or I could express it better, that when we talk about new developments coming in within the city, I love the idea of having mixed incomes within a development. And to me, that really sets the tone and sends a message of what we're looking for as a community in regards to really trying to keep our housing stock percentages where they are without getting off balance or off kilter, and how important that is to be able to have that 20-minute city. You want people that can live, work, play, and learn here. I get it. I'm all in. So I know you mentioned it, and you said that you're not asking for any incentives, and you're not, and that's great, but you're really asking for a lot of entitlements. And I think when, you know, it's my responsibility to make sure that those entitlements that you're seeking, that we are giving to you, really meet our goals and our objectives, and making sure that they are complementary to the general plan and to the Smith Innovation Hub, and that's where I have a little bit of a question about that. So, you know, my thought process on this, and I think you already know it because we've had this conversation, I'm sure you're not going to hear anything that, you know, I didn't tell, I didn't say before, is I'd love to see the way that you incorporate some art to really make this a unique and cool gateway type of a project to the Smith Hub. I think that's huge. I'm really kind of concerned about, there's no open space at all, so everything is just internal. There's really not anything that connects that particular development, and maybe that's the intent, and if it is, that's okay, but that's not what I would expect to see. But, you know, everything is really internal, so I really kind of worry about that. Love to see some open space, and I'm asking only about the height because when you get five stories, we all know five stories is stick and stucco, and that really does kind of look like a stick and stucco building, and not anything uniquely to what I would love to see in that area that is the gateway to something new and different and innovative. Nice, absolutely nice. You're right. I don't disagree with that. But unique and different, I don't see that, I don't feel that. I'm super concerned about who can afford to live there and, you know, what kind of message that sends. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from. I wouldn't even be opposed for you to build it higher and, you know, create some more density there in the sense of height, but maybe create some open space and something different and unique. And of course, you know, I'd love some steel and stucco. I mean, get rid of that stucco and create some steel and cement if that's possible. But I know that's asking for a lot, but I do still feel like, you know, it's my responsibility to ensure that, you know, we get a product that is very complementary to what we're trying to achieve. So that's my two cents, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Wendy, did you have anything with that, or should I just go to Vice Mayor Keating?
I appreciate Councilwoman Savage's comments, and I'm going to keep working and come back hopefully with some even better answers for her at the next hearing. So I think at this point, you can move on, but I do appreciate her comments.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't think I've ever heard my friend and colleague, Robin, suggest a taller building, so I do think that there's an opportunity here maybe to do something along those lines. If we could make it taller, make it denser, it could bring the prices down and maybe have an opportunity for some more public benefit that has been requested by some of my other colleagues. It's just, you know, maybe it's something worth considering. I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Anyone else from council have any comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. This is only the first hearing for this item, so no formal votes going to be taken this evening, but if we've got nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and let Wendy be done for the evening. Everybody okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Sounds good, Wendy. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Take care. Mayor, you're muted.
I don't know how that happened, but I'll fix that quickly. Next up, the last item under this section, which is item 6B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the city code relating to preserves by section, by amending Section 23-110 relating to rules for use, criminal penalty by amending Section 23-111 relating to rules for use, civil penalty by amending Section 23-113 relating to authority to establish additional rules and regulations. to authority to establish additional rules and regulations by adding Chapter 23, Article 5, Division 3, relating to administration and enforcement by adding section 23-131, commencement of civil action citation content, by adding section 23-132 relating to civil fines and penalties imposed, by adding section 23-133 relating to each day's separate violations, and by adding section 23-134 relating to habitual offender. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 29, 2020. Boy, that was a mouthful and a lot of numbers. Anyone from council, any comments or questions about this? Or Madam Clerk, did we get any cards?
No submissions for this item, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, council. Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for that item and move on to the next section here, which is 6C. I want to announce that items 61 and 63 have both been withdrawn at the request of staff. However, item 62 was scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption, and a vote will be taken this evening. Item 62 is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a major amendment to General Plan 2040, including a projected land use map amendment from various land use categories to mixed use, and a new mixed use industrial category with general plan text amendments, and a projected residential density map amendment from various density categories on approximately 854 acres for the Urban Core Master Plan and TOD, located within the area generally bounded by Hardy Drive to the west, Union Pacific Railroad to the south, Loop 101 and city limits to the east, and Loop 202 to the north. The applicant is the city of Tempe, and also as a note, a major general plan amendment requires at least a two-thirds city council majority vote, which is five out of seven council members for approval. I have one quick question about this item. If Donna, you're available?
Yes, I am, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, just a quick question about this. I know we sent out a press release earlier this week regarding the withdrawal of the Urban Core Master Plan from consideration. My understanding is that the only reason this item is still labeled that way is because that's how the item went out for the initial public hearing, but it technically isn't related to the Urban Core Master Plan anymore. Is that correct?
Yes. When we took the Smith Hub Innovation Plan, we took it along with this whole, as a whole Downtown Urban Core and TOD plan. Tonight's action is just for the Smith Innovation Hub Core General Plan Amendment to allow the uses described in what you approved earlier. So this was the title that was going through legally. We couldn't change it. But we are not moving forward with the Downtown Urban Core Plan, just the Smith Hub for the approval tonight.
Great. Thank you, Donna. I just wanted to make that clear, because I'm sure, you know, there could be some confusion, you know, from members of the public making, I thought this was not moving forward, but yet this is on the agenda, and why are they approving it? So thank you for clarifying this is just merely the Smith Innovation Hub and not related to the, not related to the original Urban Core Master Plan. Ryan Levake, I see you have your hand up as well?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So specifically, because we have this general plan amendment, major amendment process, there's still a lot of elements of that original Urban Core Master Plan in the general plan amendment request. But we're asking council now to specifically vote on a modified resolution, which is Exhibit B. And Exhibit B is specifically what we've been talking about, the Smith Industrial Hub area.
Great. Ryan, do you need, for a council motion for approval, can it just be read to approve item 62? Or do you need some kind of special language spoken into the record?
If I could ask that you please respond to the Exhibit B resolution that's provided in your reports.
Okay. All right. Any council members have any comments or questions for Ryan or Donna? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion on item number, on item number 62 with reference to section B, as Ryan referenced?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seceded by Councilmember Navarro. I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote. Councilmember Navarro?
Aye.
Councilmember Cubey?
Aye.
Councilmember Garland?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes.
Councilmember Arrendondo Savage?
Aye.
Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Item 62 passes unanimously seven to zero. Next up, we've got item number seven here, which is current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I want to go ahead and start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of announcements. I love spending my, living in Tempe and spending my time here, and because we just have an amazing community. And one of the announcements I have is movies in the park. So now that the weather's cooling down, and people are feeling like they can at least get outside and stay socially distant from one another and wear masks, we can return to movies at the park. And we're going to be doing that, starting at Kiwanis Park this weekend. And so it's going to be October 16th. We're going to have a movie onward featured at Kiwanis. And then the following week is on October 23rd, we will have Hocus Pocus, focused, or featured at Kiwanis. There are new safety guidelines. And so I would like everyone to go to tempe.gov/movies, so you know what the safety guidelines are before you go to the movies. So come on out and enjoy our cooler weather and our wonderful park at Kiwanis. Second is, I would like to just, my second announcement is Tempe Small Business Grant Program has now been rolled out. So we are here to support our small businesses. We have $1.1 million in CARES Act to help our small businesses in our community. So go to tempe.gov/businessgrants to apply for your grant, for your small business. I know a lot of small businesses have been really struggling with the coronavirus outbreak. And so we encourage you to apply for assistance. And you need to do that by October 30th. So that's not that far away. So go ahead and go to tempe.gov/businessgrants to apply. Thanks, and have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Arrendondo Savage?
I'm good. Thank you. Well, I mean, you're good, too. Everybody's good. I just, no, I have nothing. Thank you.
You are definitely good, Councilmember Arrendondo Savage. As a matter of fact, I would say great. Next up, Vice Mayor Keating.
I'm great. You're great. Everyone's great, Mayor.
Love it. This is good. This is a good night. Councilmember Garland, you want to keep it going?
Well, I think everybody's great, but I also have an announcement.
All right.
I just want to say that last Thursday night, we had a webinar, and it was entitled, or titled Critical Care for Tempe's Trees. And I hosted the event with our very special guest speaker, Richard Atkins. And Richard is our urban forester. And I have to say, it was so much fun to listen to all the great questions from the audience, and then listen to Richard's advice, which was very helpful. And I have to say, I took a lot of notes. We had over 50 people on the webinar and received a number of additional emails and text messages asking other questions, or just wanting to thank Richard. Because of that excitement about this subject, we asked Richard if he would be willing to have this type of webinar on a seasonal basis. And I would like to announce that he said yes. So we are very excited about that. When we have the next date and time, we'll post it onto our social media and our city calendar. But just in case, if you missed the webinar, or if you'd like to see it again, please go to my council page on the city's website, and you will find the video. And you will also find a link to Richard's Urban Forester page, and that has a lot more information on there also. I wanted to thank Chris Baxter for her help with getting this event on our social media. I want to thank my awesome council aide, Kristin Gwynn, for her help setting up the event, and for keeping us organized with the questions during the webinar. And then I'd like to give one more big thank you and shout out to Richard Atkins, our amazing urban forester. He is an absolute rock star. So I just want to tell him thank you one more time, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Navarro?
No, Mayor, I am good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Cubey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, we have Tempe Gains coming up this again. And we know Gain is getting, Arizona is involved in neighborhoods. It's all about staying connected. And because of the pandemic, these events not necessarily canceled, but just transformed. And so a lot of neighborhoods are coming together to help the homeless and the working poor. Service providers are under so much pressure. We know Tempe Community Action Agency used to see, I think, 50 families per month, and now it's 300 families per month for their food bank. So we're seeing some real need in the community. So the neighbors have stepped up. So you can go to tempe.gov/gain, and you can find out where the nearest drop-off location is to donate water, or food, non-perishable food, or hygiene items, whatever it is, clothing. Please go to that address. And then I really want to salute TNT, Tempe Neighbors Together, because they are also contributing, deciding to even do more, and asking neighbors to donate funds to one of three organizations, and that's the ARIS Foundation, that helps our homeless, especially our young homeless folks, and then TCAAs Oasis Drop In and Food Bank, and Saving One Life, which is a partner with us in our TNR program. And I posted those on my social media. You can go and look at the URLs, and please give. Thank you so much to TNT for putting this effort together. There's even going to be a concert. Check out Mark Norman and his Facebook site, and you'll learn about the concert on Saturday night at 7:00. Thank you for that. And then you can go now to the connecting with Cubey event. I will have an event coming up on October 24th for an hour and a half. And it's just sort of a drop-in, talk about anything, anything that's on your mind. Issues that are before the council now, and this is, this can be constituent services work, if you have a neighborhood-specific issue, or we could talk about larger, larger issues and things happening in Tempe. And look forward to seeing you virtually. Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. I also have to give you credit for the best WebEx backdrop of the evening. So every time I see it, I feel like I need to come protect you. So just wanted to give you props for that. Next up here, we have item number eight. What, no, there, we have item number eight here, public appearances. I know we have a live speaker, but we also have a couple of people with comment cards that the clerk will read into the record. But I believe we have Nolan Williams to speak on item 61 that was pulled by staff. But if Nolan is ready, we'll have him go ahead and speak.
Pull up the text of my message that I wrote and submitted. This is, this is in the context of the polling of the Urban Core Master Plan. Can you hear me properly?
Yes, Nolan, you're good.
Okay, this is about the polling of the Urban Core Master Plan and the email that was sent out yesterday. I am extremely disappointed in the city of Tempe for failing to follow through on the most bare bones reforms needed to keep housing prices and our homeless population from skyrocketing. Through emails, citizens were informed yesterday that there is a lack of consensus. But when the city conducted online public forums, as I recall, there was clear majority support in favor of most, if not all, of the increase in density, increasing density proposals. I think the city needs to step up and listen to all of its residents, and not the latticest dozen, and listen to when residents say that affordability for everyone is very important, and that we want tensor housing. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Nolan. Really appreciate it. Madam Clerk, I think you have a couple of comments?
Yes, Mayor, I do. The next item is from Daniel Rubio, resident of Tempe. It's also regarding the same item. He writes, "I am disappointed in the council for not taking up the Urban Core Master Plan. After two years of hard work by the staff, it is sad to see this plan fall to a highly motivated vocal minority. Young working people in this city do not always have the luxury of being on top of every single city meeting and following every step of the planning process. Climate change and housing affordability are the two crises we have in this city. Personally, I would like to be able to continue living in this city and on this planet. The Urban Core Master Plan was the bare minimum of work that needed to be done to help the city make more affordable, to make the city more affordable and sustainable. Council's abdication of this due to an unrepresentative sample of the community, who could afford to constantly attend meetings and pester council, is extremely disappointing. It is beyond time for the council to get serious on climate and housing. By failing to do a small fraction of what needs to be done, I feel you have failed to take the climate crisis, and those struggling to stay in their homes seriously. It is my sincere hope this changes." Thank you. And then one more item, a general item, came from Luke Brenneman, and he's writing regarding homelessness prevention initiatives. Homelessness experts, example, Dr. Tim Huffman at St. Louis University, are emphasizing rental assistance is one of the most urgent and effective city programs for preventing homelessness during COVID-19. But this was not included in the September 24 initiatives the council passed. Is Tempe including rental assistance in the $7.8 million allocation for community initiatives in response to the pandemic? If not, why and how was this decision made, and who was consulted? Regarding the September 24 agenda items 5A10, 5A15, and 5A16, is the city consulting infectious disease experts and having them visit all shelters, service sites, and housing within the scope of the city's homelessness prevention programs? Homelessness experts, example, Dr. Tim Huffman of St. Louis University, strongly advise on onsite infectious disease expert advising. Regarding the September 24 council meeting, item 5A6, for funding workshops and trainings to support energy decision-making to combat homelessness, will those workshops and trainings be virtual? If not, how will they accommodate COVID-19 precautions? If so, how will people have online access if they do not have reliable internet options? Mayor, that closes out our public comment for the evening.
Great. Thank you, Carla. All right. With that said, we don't have any.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, the last speaker had a lot of questions. Can staff follow up with that? I'm afraid it might just get lost, since it came in differently than the council communicator. There were a lot of questions, like including information about, about housing assistance, and that we can easily answer, but we can't.
Yeah, I think regarding that last card, we can definitely have staff follow up. I can follow up with our city manager, Andrew Ching, afterwards, to make sure that those questions do get answered for that resident. Great. All right. With that said, we don't have any other business on the agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:10 PM. Thank you very much for attending, and we look forward to seeing you on the 29th.